You got it. Welcome, everyone, to the November 15th, 2023 zoning board of adjustments for the town of Barrington. I'm calling the meeting to order at, hopefully, I'm timely, 7:00 p.m. If you would like to, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We start each meeting with a roll call of our members that are present here on the board and staff. Harikov?
Vanessa Price, Town Planner.
Thank you. We have three cases before us tonight. Our very first case is a continued case number 226-5014 NR23 VAR. Owners Darrell and Michelle Kelly, request by the applicant for a variance from Article 3, Section 3.1.6, site review, sorry, site plan review regulations in Article 19, Commercial Keeping of Farm Animals at 17 Coachman Drive, MAP 226, Lot 50-4, in the neighborhood Regional Zoning District. Case has been continued twice now, and we're happy to have the case underway. Thank you.
Okay. So just for a show and tell sort of thing, Cheryl couldn't make it the other, yesterday for the sidewalk. So I just wanted to make sure that you had kind of a visual of what we're talking about here. Now, our lot is 1.957 acres. We were the first residents on this road. We purchased our property several years ago at auction and have enjoyed being there. I've recently retired from Liberty Mutual and as an examiner there in the Claims Department, and I just, I've always had a desire because I grew up with animals. All my mother's family, they're all, they all had large dairy farms, you know. Anyway, so I've always just loved animals. I grew up in Wyoming and we relocated here after I made a little tour through Texas and picked up a husband. But anyway. So anyway, I just, with no further ado, I know that there has been a concern expressed by our neighbors about, they had, they don't really want us to have animals. These, and honestly, this is not for commercial use, this is for personal use. So I don't think, I think that commercial use is a bit of a mischaracterization, even though it doesn't specify, there isn't an alternative specification in the zoning ordinance. We made sure that we looked at the ordinance, the fence height is under eight feet. We have a fence, as you can see, around the perimeter for the safety of the animals as well as so that they won't wander. We do have some chickens that free range, and the benefit of those chickens free ranging is to eradicate harmful insects such as ticks and so forth. And they just have done a really good job because we haven't found any ticks on our children or myself or visitors since we've had the chickens, and that's really been a good thing. Also, we obtained three buff geese from the Midwest that were shipped to the post office here, and I picked them up in the spring. They have been obtained. I did a lot of research. They're great guardians for the goats, and we have two goats. They're Nigerian, miniature Nigerians. The purpose of the geese are for to be guardians as well as, once the male chooses which female he wants, you know, because they breed for life or they mate for life, we may, for the other one, we may use for meat production. We're not sure yet, but if the male, if she doesn't lay eggs, then the only purpose would be to process her. And we have someone, a farm that outside the Barrington area that does the processing for us, CDR Farm does the processing for us, very nice people. We've really enjoyed, the fact that we've gotten these animals has been a real connecting factor with other people in the community. It's been a really enjoyable process. So the other question was about noise, and as I read the Barrington Town Noise Ordinance, that agriculture is excluded from that noise ordinance, the New Hampshire RSA 3139. However, we have obtained crow callers for the rooster to try to keep the crowing down and to, out of consideration for our neighbors. So Elvis and Ruffles, they really don't crow that much, but they do watch over the girls. That's a benefit of them being around and, so they watch over the hens and alert to any concerns, any worries. Also, there was a question during the sidewalk about whether all the hens are laying, they're not currently all laying yet. Some of them are very young hens, but once they all lay, start laying eggs, we expect no more than a production of about 30 eggs a month, or excuse me, 30 eggs a week, rather. That's two and a half dozen. I have my husband and three adult boys, and believe me, two and a half dozen eggs don't, it don't go far, you know. So it is for personal use, but I like the fact that these are eggs. I know what these chickens are eating, so I know what's going into the eggs, and I know what's going into the frying pan or into the baking recipe or whatever, and that's what I really appreciate. We had a few extra roosters that we had CDR Farm process for us, and those will be useful for eating. So I mean, this is just for our purpose and our use. Yes, ma'am?
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I am going to ask, after your narrative, that you begin to go through the five components of your application-
Sure.
-under the description of request, and then the special-
Yes.
...conditions that you feel exist-
Thank you.
...in relation to the variants.
Yes, okay, very good. Then, the question of odor, we allowed two site inspections. The first site inspection by the zoning inspector, he gave a very positive, Mr. Jameson gave a very positive review. He had visited the site on three different occasions, both on our side and on the budding property, and could not detect any offensive odor. We tried to take really good care of that issue, and we are, we take the waste and we put it in compost bins to take care of that. And that's the management of the organic waste per 7.1.7 parentheses 2. So getting to the, now Tracy, are you saying this particular, okay?
Sure. If you turn to the part where your special conditions exist so that the public can hear the rationale for the variants, please.
Yes, yes. Okay. So, a request for the special conditions, 15.2.3 parentheses 1a, special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under applicable law. Honestly, you know, this being our desire for these animals is for our own benefit for food source and so forth, I think that not allowing the variant would put us in a very difficult place as far as relocating or having to turn away my goats that I love very much, and will be, the purpose of the goats is to, for milk production, and Nigerian goats are, I have Larissa here who is, can speak to that as far as the benefit in that regard. 15.2.31b, granting variants would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. These animals are loved as pets and have been a blessing for my retirement years. They also eat the harmful poison ivy and the insects on my property, which I've been, I've had to seek medical attention, cellulitis from poison ivy, not even getting close to it necessarily, but doing gardening. The fact that there, my son Levi had got the, from the tick bite, he had to receive treatment for what, I forget what that, Lyme's disease, he had to get treatment for that. And because he's special needs, I don't want to have additional risk to his health, and so I request that you grant this, that you grant the variants for this purpose. Also, 15.2.31c, granting variants will not result in diminution of surrounding property values. In speaking with my attorney or just consulting with my attorney, he had said that because the ordinance itself allows for people, citizens of the town of Barrington, to have farm animals for personal use, that it, that's a given as far as the real estate and property values, it's understood, unless you are in some kind of a neighborhood where there's a homeowners' association which restricts or makes further conditions to your property, it's understood that those are allowed and it shouldn't impact the property value if it's well managed. So we're asking for that purposes because you have seen how we are managing the animals. 15.2.31d, granting the variants would do a substantial justice. These animals meet our food and emotional needs. These, the goats and the animals, when I go back there and sit back there, there's even people who come and visit the property talk about how peaceful it is back there. And the love of these animals, I mean, I'll sit there and the chickens will just come around and, and the geese, they all, I don't know if it's because they think I have bread or, but I do love to hold them and pet them and scratch their bellies and just, it's just really emotionally beneficial for me and for the people that come to visit as well. So 15.2.31e, granting of the variants would not be contrary to public interest. So I'm hoping, I've been in touch with a program called Life Bridge for young people who are struggling with emotional issues and so forth, and I'm hoping that perhaps just as a ministry and benefiting other people to use these animals to encourage young people to have the same benefit that they benefit me. I want to share that, you know. 15.2.32, for purposes of this subparagraph, unnecessary hardship means that owing a special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. I don't know what really distinguishes us from other properties in the area, other than the fact that, you know, we've been there a long time and we've loved being there. And so I think that because of 15.2.32a, no fair and a substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision to the property. And 15.2.32b, the proposed use is reasonable. You know, I was very selective in what animals, because the current ordinance allows for pigs, horses, and cows for the same amount of space, whereas most websites find that goats don't require a full acre. Not to say that there's, I'm sure there's a reason why the horses, you're treating the horse the same as the goat and the horse the same as the pig and so forth, but I think that's probably where your wisdom comes into play here. These goats don't produce, you know, immense amounts of waste or anything, they're very sweet, like a couple middle-sized dogs. So several longstanding citizens and neighbors, they're very supportive of us having these animals. I just ask that maybe you, that you would grant me this, grant us this variant, you know, because it's, it's maybe one or two individuals that may not see things the same way we do, but there's a whole community that is supportive of, you know, raising chickens and poultry and goats and, you know, small animals like that. Again, I do appreciate, if I could have just a couple minutes for Larissa, just, she actually has been a great resource for me.
We're going to allow comment after questions for you.
Okay.
But if you're done presenting, I would like to ask that staff from the town of Barrington provide us with a breakdown of what would be allowable on the lot, the size, that we are discussing tonight with this case.
The regulations state for the smaller animals that she has, you can have one for every 5,000 square feet.
And that would allow how many?
The actual lot number was what?
Like 1.9, I believe it's 17. 1.95 acres.
Yes.
Yeah, 1.95 acres.
Yeah, what was the square footage? So that would be what, 90,000?
85.
85. So that would be, so she could have 17 of those small animals. Define small animals.
17 small animals.
According to the small animals by the, what our regulation says is chickens, ducks, rabbits, and other similar animals, is how that's described. That's the one for every 5,000 square feet. So all the small animals she has there, other than the goats, meet that definition. All right, that was my next question. So goat is not.
How many animals do you have on the property excluding the two goats?
12 chickens, 3 geese.
So then the goats is based on one for every 40,000 square feet, so you are, if she didn't have any of the chickens or geese, she could have the two goats. But the combination of all of them puts her over. Just saw some background information, I wrote this years ago for, because of another issue that happened in town, and what I did was, I took the information I got from UNH, and it was based on best management practices for handling manure and that kind of waste so that someone, it all started with a quarter acre lot and 20 pigs, you know. So that's a whole different issue. So when we did it, we tried to find something that was not overly complicated when I worked with the planning board, so we did small animals and large animals. We didn't think to do medium-sized animals, which we probably could have, which would have been a different number. And the way this is written, you could actually go to the planning board, if you have less, if you have more, you want to have more animals than this allows, you can go there as a farm and ask to have it as a commercial keeping of farm animals. But I understand your rationale is they're not commercial farm animals, and that's the reason why you were looking for the variants.
Yes, sir. There are more pets.
There's no sale of eggs or milk?
No.
Anything else you need to provide, Vanessa?
I don't have anything else. I know there was a question about HOA, and the town does not enforce HOA.
We're very aware. Thank you. Do you have someone you have that would like to speak on your behalf as well?
Yes, yes.
Bring them up, and if they could state their name and address, please. She's presenting, yes, yep, facts of the case. Go ahead.
I'm Larissa Mullin. I live in Milton Mills, New Hampshire. I bred these lovely folks' goats. I have been breeding Nigerian dwarf dairy goats for about 15 years now, and I have actually probably sold about 15 or 20 Nigerian dwarf dairy goats to various people who live in this town. So this is the first time that we've had to deal with something like this, so of course I'm happy to help out and just speak in regards to the goats. It was interesting, and I understand, you know, speaking with UNH with the best practices for sizes of animals, Nigerian dwarf dairy goats are relatively new breed, so perhaps when that was written, they weren't as popular as they are now. The larger-sized dairy goats, which, you know, would make sense for more space, are typically about 200 pounds. Nigerian dwarf dairy goats are about 50 pounds. So they're much, much, much smaller animals, and so they do not require nearly as much space typically, and I think I have it written down, the square footage, usually, I teach several classes for folks about dairy goats, so we like to speak about space. Typically, I recommend about 135 square feet per goat. I have about 20 dairy goats, and they live on my farm, which is four acres that we have. And they, honestly, I would have to say, they probably spend their, most of their time in a space about the size of this room. So they don't need nearly as much space as something like a cow or a horse, because they're not grazing animals, they're more browsers. So they'll eat shrubs and things like that as opposed to needing lots of grass for lots of space. So that's one of the rationales for them not needing as much space. And, you know, in terms of shelter, something as small as like 10 square feet is probably something that they would need. Of course, we, these guys covered, you know, the different benefits of them. The majority of the goats I sell, even though I'm a commercial dairy, because they're so small and personable and sweet, the majority of them go to folks like these, you know, who have them as pets. So, just like Michelle and Darrell, the majority, they usually start out as pets, you know, and sometimes then you end up, like, you know, I originally started out with two and thought they would be pets, and they still are pets for me. But, so I'd say that's, you know, mainly the one reason why people carry that, have them. Also, they do a wonderful job of eating poison ivy, getting rid of brush. For milk, Nigerian dwarf dairy goats are really pretty impressive melkers. They can be in milk typically, you know, about 10 months up to several years, as long as two years is, can be the length of a lactation. So it's not, they need to be bred constantly, so they, you know, they really are a very nice, small kind of pet with a few little benefits. So I think that's mostly what I had to say, but I'm happy to answer any kind of specific questions anybody has in terms of spacing or housing, because that's what I do all day long, every day.
Does anyone on the board have questions?
I do. I have a quick question, if you're able to answer this. And I understand if you aren't, compared to a comparably sized dog, how much waste, what is the relative waste between, you know, the typical pet, like a dog, and a goat?
That is a really great question, because of, goats have a very different digestive system than dogs, than cows, than horses. They are ruminants, so they have four stomachs, and they're able to turn something like hay, which seems very non-digestible, and because they have a rumen and a big fermentation vat, which is what they use to digest their food, they can go from something like hay and really extract majority of the nutrients out of it. So I would say, you know, the waste is maybe a, I'm trying to think of like the, I don't want to say bowl, because it's not very appetizing.
To clarify, I meant like in volume.
In volume?
Yeah.
I would say much less than a dog. And it's something that composts very quickly, doesn't really have much of an odor, because there's really not a lot of leftover material in it. Their digestive system is so good at extracting those nutrients that there's really not a lot left coming back out of them. If that kind of, that's why, you know, you always see the old adage of like a goat eating a tin can and goats eating cardboard and things like that. It's just because their digestive system is so efficient at turning something that's really inedible into food that they just really, they do a great job.
I've also done some research on the benefits of the milk itself. I have, a daughter of a friend of mine has heard of Bowel Syndrome. This particular goat, their milk is different from most of the other goats that produce milk, in that the molecular structure of the milk is such that it makes it so easily digestible that it sometimes can reverse. Caritable Bowel Syndrome. My hope is by sharing, using it for ourselves for our health, and then also maybe the opportunity to share with friends and family that I could. Girls, buttercup, and baby.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other witnesses? Okay. I'm going to open up for public comment at this time. Is there anybody that would like to speak that's present? Thank you. I'm going to ask, as we're taking it on public comment, that you give your name and your address as you present. Please present only facts, not opinions. The ZBA is charged with functioning as a quasi-judicial board, which means facts are what are important to us when we're reviewing the cases. So please come on up. Is that, is that lit up green? Yeah. Oh. So name and address, please.
Yep, so Lori Hodgson.
Chad Hodgson, 25 Coachman Drive. We are butters to 17 Coachman Drive.
And I'm just going to start off just briefly, and then my husband has some ordinance things to share. So Barrington residence for 25 years, have been in this residence for 10 years. We actually just met our neighbor a couple of months ago for the first time, and as you saw when you walked the property yesterday, I think it was yesterday, the farm was built this past spring, just feet away from our back deck in our backyard, out of all the different area spaces in their backyard. It has, we have nothing against our neighbors, like I said, we just met them, nothing against animals whatsoever, we love animals, it's just affecting our quality of life, not only our property value, but our quality of life. We cannot, cannot open our windows in the summertime, the spring when it gets nice out and we have a nice, beautiful day with no humidity, we cannot open our windows because this smell is so incredibly pungent. Mrs. Kelly described how she could go out into her backyard and experience serenity. We can't do that. We can't go out on our deck and have a meal with our family and barbecue anymore. I can't go outside and read a book. It is that, and it's very, very loud, very loud and very pungent. I know that she said that, you know, they have been working on the waste management, either it's not working or it's not being done.
Either it's not working or it's not being done because it's truly, truly a huge, huge influence on our life. And, you know, we can't afford to move out of our property right now. You know, I'm a teacher. I, we just, you know, we're here in our home. And we just ask of you to please understand where we're coming from too and to take that into consideration. And they do wander into, you know, that's the least of our worries. They do wander into our yard frequently, daily. You know, we have the alarm, the video system, the cameras and. Just, my husband's just going to quickly go through a couple of sections.
So I have, I'm going to read through this. It's factual and going to be straight to the point. I have copies for everybody if I can slide this. Okay. Okay, like I said, I wrote down the stuff I wanted to talk about because I just wanted to go straight to the point. So I'm pretty much going to kind of read this. For sections 1.3 parentheses 3, 1.3 parentheses 4, and 1.6, the Town of Barrington, New Hampshire zoning ordinance states its applicability to quote, "preserve the essential character and quality of life in the community to protect property values and shall be interpreted as minimum requirements adopted for the promotion of public health, safety, and welfare and other purposes noted above." That is the quality of life and to protect property values. So contrary to the Town of Barrington Code Enforcement Office, the ordinance and state of New Hampshire law, the residents of 17 Coachman Drive have been in violation of the following requirements. State of New Hampshire Title 62 Criminal Code, Section 6353, identifying any person having the charge of custody of domestic stalk or foul knowingly, recklessly, or negligently permits the same to enter upon, pass over, or remain upon land of another without written permission of the owner shall be in violation of this code. The residents initially purchased chickens and roosters and constantly allowed them to free roam onto our property for months. Eventually, they built a wire fence to contain them, but still continue to allow them to free roam on occasion. I have video of them as recently as Sunday and Monday of this week. After cutting trees, filling and grading an area for the animals, the residents of 17 Coachman Drive erected a wire fence and purchased goats and large geese. Current count of farm animals owned is at least two goats, three large geese, and approximately a dozen chickens and roosters. This exceeds the total number of farm animals permitted by the Town of Barrington based on property size, which is approximately 83,000 square feet per the ordinance. With all of these farm animals, the residents of 17 Coachman Drive chose to place them immediately adjacent to the property line abutting 25 Coachman Drive, resulting in a situation which violates Section 3.1.2 of the ordinance by creating persistent use that is obnoxious by reason of the production or emission of odor from excessive animal waste and noise from the goats, geese constantly screeching, and the rooster herd crowing as early as 4:00 AM earlier this summer. Section 7.1 of the ordinance is intended to prevent land or buildings from being used in any manner that would create any nuisance conditions. Section 7.12 of the ordinance states all noise except that generated by normal human or vehicular activity shall be muffled so as not to be objectionable due to intermittence or shrillness. Residents of 17 Coachman Drive, it create a situation which violates this requirement. Section 7.13, the ordinance states, no condition or operation that will result or does result in the creation of odors such as to interfere unreasonably with the comfort of the public shall be permitted to be established or allowed to continue. Residents of 17 Coachman Drive, it create a situation with the offensive odor of animal waste. In some instances, it is similar to raw sewage enters the property and dwelling of 25 Coachman Drive. The personal effect that that has on us and our property, number one, a loss of property value. So the sight, sound, and smell of the animals located next to the property line and in close proximity to our yard, our deck, and our dwelling creates a situation where if we were to attempt to sell the property, it would be viewed as significantly less desirable and less valuable compared to other properties in Coachman Estates, resulting in a significant seller's disadvantage and financial loss in comparison to similar properties located in the area. Secondly, as the budding property owners, we cannot enjoy our yard or deck outside due to the noise and the pungent odor. As the budding property owners, we cannot open windows or sliders due to odor entering the dwelling, nor can we leave windows open in the evening due to excessive noise during the evening or noise waking us up prior to sunrise in the morning. Due to the need to keep windows shut, air conditioners during the summer have been required to be run significantly more often, resulting in increased financial cost to us rather than having the option to open windows and receive fresh air. The animal pen is located directly adjacent to our well water reservoir and uphill of our property. This is potential for animal waste runoff to our property and water supply creates a serious concern for us. These issues are a combination of the residences of 17 Coachman Drive owning farm animals in excess of the current allowance of the ordinance in addition to the location where those farm animals are fenced, as well as the lack of care taken to prevent noise, odor, and straying animals from significantly impacting the value, use, and enjoyment of the property at 25 Coachman Drive. As a result, we, the residents of 25 Coachman Drive, object to the request for a variance by the residents of 17 Coachman Drive and request enforcement of the current ordinance requirements due to current and repeated violations of the ordinance for over six months by the residents of 17 Coachman Drive before and after a formal complaint was filed by us with the Town of Barrington Code Enforcement Office and prior to the residents of 17 Coachman Drive requesting a variance to deviate from the ordinance. Additionally, the significant effect this situation has had on the quality of life for us to be able to enjoy our own property and dwelling due to the sight, sound, and odor of the farm animals, but no ability for us to control the current situation. Financial impact this situation has caused through increased use of air conditioners as well as the significant impact this has on the decrease of property value and property use. This refers back specifically to the applicability of the Town of Barrington zoning ordinance. On the next page, you can see the zoning map layout of 17 Coachman Drive. You can see the location, the general location of the farm animal fencing and its proximity to our house and our deck. And then the following page, you can see, highlighted in pink is the general location of the farm animal fencing and circled and highlighted in blue is the well reservoir for our property. Again, keep in mind that those farm animals are located uphill, so any waste runoff comes down towards our well reservoir. And then finally, there are just some photos here. Those are, first photo is chickens free ranging, just identification of the animals, the geese, the goats. And then the last page is, on the bottom is a picture of our front yard with the chickens in our yard without written permission. So based on those facts, that's why we reject the request for variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys have any questions for us?
Yes. So your write-up that you've provided cites that the roosters heard crowing as early as 4:00 AM on a daily basis. Yet when you spoke, you said as early as 4:00 AM this summer. When was the last time that you guys were affected by that?
So I think the earliest we hear them now that it gets dark, stays dark until about 5:00, 5:30 in the morning.
So 5:00, 5:30?
At this point in time. During the summertime, it was 4:00 AM.
And that's every day?
Every day for about a month or two.
And what's the distance from your deck to the pen? I didn't see a photo here that really shows that.
It's probably from our deck to the den.
Yeah.
Probably approximately 50 feet.
Thank you, a little bit less than that.
About that.
Yeah, well, you guys went and walked the property, so you saw how.
You saw it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was there. Have you had your well tested?
We have not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Just a second, go ahead.
I understand that a well has to be 5% from the septic system, 75 feet from the septic system. So is your well 75 feet from your?
The well itself, not the, yes.
Okay, and you also understand that if, if we were to deny this, it would only result in her likely getting rid of two goats or just two goats, right? Or two geese?
She got rid of the two goats, she would be in compliance. If she got rid of all the chickens and geese, she could keep the two goats and still be in compliance.
Yeah, so she will still have the chickens and geese.
I believe there's also a provision in the ordinance that if there's an issue with noise, sight, and odor, that they would also be required to put up privacy fencing to protect from that.
That's not quite true.
I, I believe there's a provision there that addresses that. It may not require it, but it addresses it.
Any other questions?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Thibodeau.
When you talked about the distant, or her animals walking on your property, you quoted a state provision on that.
Correct.
That wasn't local?
Correct.
Does that?
We have a local provision that's a selectment policy that was adopted about four or five years ago. And that's a police enforcement thing. It's not a zoning.
Police enforcement, you have to go arrest the chickens.
The owners.
Wow. They have, it's like if a dog was running loose, they have a right to go pick up the dog and put it, just like they could do if a chicken was running loose, they have a right to go get it. This all started because of an issue over on Orchard Hill that was a regulation.
So our ordinance supersedes state ordinance.
It's similar.
It's similar. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ford? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to provide public comment? And if you would, if you would take your mouse and mouse over your screen, you'll find that there's a beautiful little sketch of a hand and click on that. That will alert us to the fact that you would like to speak.
Madam Chair, don't see anybody for or against application.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to close public comment on this case. I do have a few more questions for the applicant, so could I have you come back up to where there's a microphone?
That's good.
So my first question is, how did the location of this current pen come about? What made you decide to use that spot?
Because it was still on, it was on our property within our lot lines and set back from the road so that the intent was to, for the safety of motorists as well as, you know, if there were any chickens that would get loose or whatever, the free ranging aspect, that it would, you know, being back, far back in the backyard, that they would be less of a disturbance. That was the intention. Also, my understanding, which, you know, we did have an incident earlier in the spring where our neighbor's dog came into our yard and attacked the rooster. And the rooster put himself in between the dog and the hens. And he actually played dead, which I did not realize was kind of a common thing with roosters. And the dog decided to leave. We, we just realized that that's kind of just animal behavior. And we, but we did look at the ordinance where in regards to animals wandering into under what you were referring to. And the understanding was any damage, like say, for example, if an animal goes into, say, say the dog, neighbor's dog comes into my yard and starts digging up all the flowers, it's the damage that the animal causes that is, that is reimbursable. So, and, you know, and hoping, you know, I was hoping that there would, the benefit of the chickens in eradicating ticks would be beneficial to all my neighbors. But, you know, I'm sure everybody has different thoughts on that, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does the fencing that you have now, does that contain your chickens and keep them in your, on your property?
The younger ones are a little lighter and so they.
Fly over it.
Fly over. I know that Mr. Thibodeau had talked about how he has like a netting over his, his enclosure. I don't know if that is.
I was the one that said that at that point.
Yeah, we do too.
Oh, sorry.
Folks, the hawks will, will get them.
Oh, oh, I see. And I have a very good friend that's not far from where we live, that she has chickens and she's kind of been coaching me about chicken behavior, chicken raising and so forth. And you just kind of understand that in the numbers that a fox is going to get it once in a while or, you know, and so you just kind of know that your numbers are going to go up and down based on the appetites of the wild animals out, out and about, so. Sorry, my husband works at TurboCam. He's taking, he was here on his lunch break.
So you took, you took on just in the springtime, the two goats, which actually caused your property to no longer be in compliance, correct? So the goats have been around now for how many months?
Larissa, I think it was since April.
Okay.
They were born in April, yeah, so, yes, very attached to them.
Okay, so can I ask, are you more attached to the goats than potentially the chickens and geese?
They're all, they're all part of our, our picture and as far as. So.
Understood, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've always, this is a personal question. Doesn't it cost more to feed them than it does if you just bought cage-free eggs? Okay, that's what I was thinking economically when we were discussing this. But it poses the question for me, are you going about this in order to save money? And it sounds to me like there isn't necessarily a cost to save.
I believe that, you know, that the availability of food sources are up and down, you know. It may be affordable now, may not be affordable next year. We never know.
Thank you.
You do it more for the health benefit. It's more than.
Go, I'll go ahead, one more question.
You had mentioned that you had purchased what are called crow collars for your roosters. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more? What is that?
Well, the science behind the crow collar are that they, you put this, it's, for lack of a better description, it's like a strip of Velcro that you put around the rooster's neck. And it's not that you're strangulating him, but, but the body posture of the rooster as they go to crow, it becomes less comfortable, so their crow is much shorter. I will say also that I don't let my geese and goats out of the barn until after 9:00 every day. So there are no geese honking and, you know, whatnot before 9:00 in the morning. I will grant you that, and we got rid of the rooster that was loud. Poor Checkers. We got rid of him and we, we were trying to manage towards gentler, quieter roosters that can provide the same guardianship that Checkers did a very good job of. It's just that, and then, so the crow collars make it less comfortable for them to crow. And the idea is that they'll not crow very much.
And what have you observed in using those?
Well, it has helped with Elvis. He doesn't, he doesn't crow as, as loud anymore or as long. And Ruffles, he doesn't crow very much as it is because he's a different breed.
Thank you.
I actually have a question. Did you check the town ordinances before you went in this direction?
Actually, straightforward, no, I really didn't delve into that. I, I kind of used my guideline from my neighbor's scenario. I did not know that Barrington had any kind of adversarial thoughts towards the keeping of chickens and geese and goats. I, I wasn't looking towards having herds of goats or anything, just for personal use. So I did not, I felt that it was within reasonable standards. But the straight answer, Jackie, is no, I did not. But afterwards, after there was a, we received a letter that there was a complaint filed. Certainly, we, we looked into it to make sure that we are, you know, doing, being good citizens and doing what we're supposed to do.
What did you mean when you said, go by your neighbor's guidelines?
Oh, my neighbor's, you know, just by what her experience had been. She had had problems where a neighbor in the, in the, the property in front of her property disliked the fact that she had some free roaming chickens.
This is in this same subdivision?
No.
Okay.
No, no, sir. Not very far, though. No, no, sir. Not very far, though, from us.
Are there any other free-ranging animals in your subdivision?
I couldn't really tell you personally, I haven't, I'd, I, I haven't polled the neighborhood or anything, Ms.
Okay.
Hard enough.
Okay.
Do you let your chickens free range? Is it your intent to let them free range all over?
Um, I frequently go back there to, and they, they immediately come to, to where I am. I am aware that they, that they do, and actually I kind of worry about, you know, sometimes if they step over that property line, you know, that they're going to eat something unhealthy because I know my neighbors spray their yards with chemicals. So, you know, I do have concerns about that, but they don't generally, I'm, they're not going two doors down or anything. They may step over the property line, may, um, there have been instances, a couple instances, where, where they did, on the other side, um, had, had gone over the property line in the, in the wooded area, and the dog then, uh, chased them. And that was the end of that because they, they're no longer, yeah.
Out of respect for the other two cases, we have to hear, I'm going to ask the board, do you have any other questions, comments, or concerns? At this time, do I have any motions that are to be presented from the board?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny this variance for case number 226-50-4NR-23. The reason is, the granting of this variance will result in the surrounding property values. I don't think that your neighbors don't want you to have animals. I think your neighbors don't want to have your animals. I think it, it's close, I was there the other day, it's right on the boundary. As soon as I walked in the backyard, the odor hit me, boom, and then it dissipates as you're there, like any odor does. The roosters were crawling, the, the goats were making their noises, the geese make some really loud noises. So it does result in lower values on their property. In the business I'm in, if I was assigned the listing for their house, and I walked people over to their backyard, and that's the commotion started going on, and that odor started going on, my buyer would be gone. They, they would be like, we came to a subdivision to buy in a neighborhood, not on a farm. I would have a hard time selling that property. I think I would have to reduce the price, take a lower offer for somebody, or find somebody that, that loves what you do. And so for that reason, I make a motion to deny variance, and, and to, to, uh, have your property adhere to the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with the smoker?
Is no to deny it, or no to?
So, when you have a motion brought forward to deny, if you vote in favor of the motion, it will deny the motion. It will, it will uphold the motion.
Yes. Correct?
That is correct.
Uphold it, and then I'm going to vote yes.
Thibodeau, why?
This one's hard for me because I as well love the animals, but I have to, um, apply what I think is fair and substantial in reference to the zoning ordinance. And I do feel that the zoning ordinance was written exactly for this type of case. So I am also going to vote in favor of the motion. I would like to ask our town planner, can we allow the homeowner up to 120 days to work on placement as she finds appropriate for the animals?
I think that might be a codem.
It would come down to your decision tonight as this board. I think on this board, you could give that lenience as you didn't, you're not granting them a full variance. You're saying, we're denying this based on this thing, but we understand the circumstances, so we're going to give you time to fix it, and I think as a board, you have that authority.
So, I, I.
If like 120 days is adequate, I think that's.
Yeah, so I, I would like to apply 120-day condition to this so that the, um, owner of the animals at this time can make an appropriate decision for her household and for her animals in order to decide who is to be placed and how she would go about that.
Would that be an amendment to?
No, it was, it would be a condition.
A condition.
Wow. You're still denying it, so it's not a condition of denial because the denial was a denial.
Right, it'll be part of the motion.
I'm denying it, so it's kind of part of the motion.
Okay.
Amendment to the motion.
Well, could I? Mm-hmm.
Barrington is an agricultural.
I agree.
Unless there's a homeowners association which denies the keeping of farm animals, you're allowed to keep farm animals. Smell's begun, I mean, we're allowed to have farm animals.
Up to the zoning, up to what zoning allows?
Yeah.
And if she's beyond the zoning, zoning.
And for me, that depends on how you look at the miniatures. I don't, I would not count them as farm animal per se. Farm, farmers are very efficient people, they don't waste anything. Going to keep an animal on their property that isn't making, you don't make any money, Nigerian.
Understood.
She said it's personal, so to me, that's a pet.
So while we were sitting here, Cheryl, I, I Googled Nigerian goats. And on goatowner.com, my question was, are Nigerian goats loud? And, yes.
Farm animals are loud.
Yes, they said Nigerian goats are louder than other goats.
I'm going to interrupt you both on this because we have a motion before us, we have a second, and we have a vote. I do, I do ask Mr. Thibodeau that you amend your motion to understand that both a fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the provision limiting density of animals in residential zoning related to this specific application. And I do ask that you amend your motion to include 120 days for the, um, owners of 17 Coachman Estates to appropriately, appropriately decide how to come into compliance.
I wouldn't mind doing it, I just want to ask how you came up with four months?
Is that four months?
That's a long time.
Um, I.
How about 60 days? I'll amend it to 60 days.
That's fine.
I'll amend my motion, allow 60 days to either, to comply with the ordinance one way or another. Goats or chickens or whatever.
And would you second that?
I feel like they need time. I would, I would really try to give them, you know, my heart breaks too. I feel they obviously care for the animals, and, um, so they are going to have to make some hard decisions and need to find good places for them, so I would give them a little more time to, to do it.
If the board would, uh, would agree to 120 days? Okay, then that's something I don't understand.
Okay.
So then I, I will go along with 120 days.
So we have an amendment to that that would allow 120 days to come into compliance with the numbers on the property. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm going to roll call vote again, please.
Jackie, yes.
I'm not understanding what's going on, we've already made it, we've already passed.
Yeah, I'm just, we're just, yeah, you amended it.
You amended it, so, so my question is, if they, if it, they don't agree to 120 days, it's still declined, it's still denied.
There, no, if you're voting yes for your motion and I'm voting yes, the motion carries, they are denied the variance.
So we're voting on the same motion twice with an amendment?
Yes.
I understand. Voting?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Is there a, an appeal for us?
There is none.
Staff, you can, within 30 days, you can ask for a reconsideration.
You can ask for reconsideration of this board.
Board, and then from there.
And then, and if the board feels they've made a bad decision, they could vote to rehear it. If they feel they made a good decision, they don't have to rehear it, that's how that process works. So the other opportunity you have is to go in front of the planning board and ask to have the commercial keeping of your farm animals. And because you can have it at a higher density for the commercial keeping of the farm animals. If the planning board finds that you meet the criteria of that type of stuff, which, I've never seen anybody go in front of the planning board, so I got absolutely no idea how they would react to it.
I'll explore my options after.
Yes. Thank you, that was a difficult case. Um, next up is the case for special exception. Case number 22326, 58 and 59 RC 23, special exception. And who's here to present? If you press that button, it should turn green for you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Cole from Beals Associates.
I'm sorry, one more time on your name?
Scott Cole.
Okay, thank you.
From Beals Associates.
Mm-hmm.
The engineering firm, which will be providing a site plan for John O'Neill and Stone Ark Development, who I'm representing, uh, John is not here this evening. To familiarize everyone with the property we're speaking of, directly across the street from where we are now, uh, the building that's actually under construction is the Stone Ark Development multi-use building. On the other side of that are two vacant properties that are currently owned by St. Hilaire Motorsports. Josh St. Hilaire has had better opportunities, uh, has decided not to pursue building on that site for his dealership. And Mr. O'Neill is looking at purchasing it. He is proposing to basically duplicate what you see now on his lot, twice on the next two lots. More or less, it's going to be the same buildings, same parking, same garages, just more of them. So, in a sense, it's going to be a bigger project of the same units. Now, as part of the proposal, under the current regulations, let me just illustrate where we are here, so. And the light brown is the current buildings under construction, garages are done, the main building is framed. Next to that is the proposed site plan, same identical pads of two. For access, we have a gray, the proposed pavement areas. Both of the lots actually have their legal frontage along Route 125. I think everybody understands, uh, how difficult it can be to obtain a DOT permit from the state of New Hampshire at times. In most cases, with 125 being a busy road, they usually require some kind of improvements. We have the availability here, since John will own the same properties, to actually use the entrance on Signature being right across from us here, access those two buildings. I believe we've spoken with Rick, uh, excuse me, the fire chief. As long as we take care of the fire needs, that won't be an issue for access as far as the town safety is concerned.
As long as you take care of what? I'm sorry.
The needs for fire access.
Mm-hmm.
I believe there'll be a proposed system, but of course, that's for the planning.
And, and has the fire chief reviewed that to see where the fire truck?
There's not been a technical review, we were.
Okay, thank you.
Recommended to come before your board first, prior to going to the planning board. I believe that's the step, the correct procedure, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
So we are technically asking for a special use to use the driveway of the existing property next door and not have to access Route 125. This keeps some, well, we know this is a controlled, controlled stop out here. It was designed for commercial use to access this pad. It's wider, it's safer than to have to do another one, uh, down there. So that's what we are requesting, is permission to basically use the access or driveway onto Signature through the existing property.
And maintenance of that driveway would be the responsibility of Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there'll be a proposed access easement leading all the way across.
And there's been no approach to the Department of Transportation to ask for access from 125?
Not with this site plan here.
Isn't there like an entryway off of 125, a dirt entryway in that bottom left-hand corner?
Currently, there's an existing gravel drive.
Mm-hmm.
That I believe, I believe was temporary access for construction. It would have to, you know, a permit would need to be all redesigned and everything for, for this application.
Mm-hmm.
Within the, I believe, the approval of the entire subdivision back here, which these lots were derived from. We were required to leave an easement, access easement, both lots along the property. So that easement is there for legality, uh, the, Mr. O'Neill just is choosing not to use it.
So there's access easement that was required by the planning board?
Uh, it was more of a reservation from New Hampshire DOT, because once you give it up, I believe you can't get it back.
Okay. Could you, um, go through the case for us and read the section of, um, it's, I think it's page, I'll tell you what page it is, of your application packet, page five, this section to be completed. And if you could read for, uh, the public, the reason that you requested special exception?
So under special exception requirements. Let me read the actual paragraph as well.
Please, I think it helps the public understand as they're reviewing these cases.
Um, item number one, no detriment to the property values in the vicinity of the proposed development will result on account of the location or scale of building structures, parking areas, or other accessways, the emission of odors, smoke, gas, dust, noise, glare, heat, vibration or other pollutants, or unsightly outdoor storage of equipment, vehicles, and other materials. Explanation, the proposed driveway coming off of Signature Drive, excuse me, Signature Drive, is a much better location than using the Route 125 as regards to, uh, heavy traffic. Number two, no hazard will be caused to the public or adjacent property on account of potential fire, explosion, release of toxic materials. The special exception pertaining to the driveway location will not cause any public safety issues. Obviously, with the intentional uses, there would be no noxious fumes or fire hazards in either case. But this certainly, allowance of this special use will not affect that in any way to the public. And it actually is aiding, in my opinion, because we're using such a controlled, existing intersection in the location of Signature Drive. Item number three, no creation of a traffic safety hazard or substantial traffic congestion will result in the vicinity of the proposed development. The answer to the proposed drive is a better solution than using Route 125. Again, anytime you can get rid of a curb cut of Route 125, I think it's a safer, safer condition. Item four, no excessive demand on municipal services and facilities, including but not limited to waste disposal, fire, excuse me, police, fire protection in schools. The proposal, the proposed drive has no effect on municipal services. Regardless, I think of where the driveway situation may be, it wouldn't actually change any of the requirements for the services. Number five, the proposed use will not result in the degradation of existing surfaces, surface and groundwater quality standards, nor it will have adverse effects on the natural functions of the wetlands on-site that would result in the loss of significant habitat flood control protection. The proposed driveway is designed in conjunction with the site plan and accounted for in the drainage design, and will not affect the wetlands. I may add to that, as you can see, the amount of gray here would actually have to increase if we supplied our own driveway. The only area that would be omitted would be this, however, we would have to add.
Are you talking about impermeable surface?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh.
And that's number five.
Can you tell us a little bit about the turtles?
The what?
The turtles you've presented, blending.
Oh, that is a retirement to put on all plans. Whenever you have a, a hit from a New Hampshire fishing game of turtles being in the area, we are required to put it on the plans. That actually came from the development of the entire subdivision in itself. There were turtles found, I believe, behind the subdivision. So any ongoing applicant in regards to that subdivision needs to carry forth those regulations. So when we go to the planning board to do our new site plan application, we will also have that on the cover for the turtles, so. Anything we do here is also. So anything we do here is also required to go back to AOT, because we have changed the previous site plan, so it'll be reviewed at the state as well.
What would the cost be to bring the roadway in off of 125 versus putting in an extended driveway?
We didn't actually look at monetary figures, not knowing what DOT would want.
Okay, and with Signature Drive, have you done any studies with expectation of how much more traffic these buildings would provide to that current curb cut on Signature?
Don't believe we have, to be honest.
Thank you.
We know what the counts are for the existing buildings, so we could multiply that, but we didn't account.
And these are zoned commercials, so the bottom level of each of these three will contain what, retail office? What will be?
Yes, eight units of commercial space. They're eight, you know, small individual, eight units.
How many square feet each?
I know that 40 deep, 19, probably 25, but they also have a garage bay in the rear of those. So I believe it's only half of that for the commercial area.
Okay.
And then above is residential.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to ask if there's anyone online who would like to speak in the public comment portion of this case, and if you would, just take your mouse across your screen, click it on that beautiful outline of a hand to raise your hand and alert our town planner that in fact he'd like to speak for or against the case.
Madam Chair, I don't see anybody online for or against this case.
Thank you. Before I ask if there's a motion, I, as a seated member, would like to ask for a continuance without prejudice to allow, oh, I'm sorry, let me close public comment first. I'd like to ask for a continuance without prejudice, because I think it's important in a situation like this. It is not a road, it is a driveway with three buildings on it, but it is a mixed-use property, and I think that our road agent and our fire department really should be providing some type of guidance for the zoning board in reference to this. Does anyone else object or have thoughts or ideas in reference to that?
I have some thoughts about it.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Looking at, looking at the plan, if they were to put that cut, Madam Chair, where the easement is shown on the lot lines. Scott, what's the distance from Signature Drive over there, in feet roughly? From where Signature Drive comes out now, right side of your plan? From there to, yeah.
Back up a little bit.
All right.
Try to explain. So the proposal with this site plan, if addition to the site plan, these we have to do that in order to each lot to be able to maintain law loading. So the existing law line as it sits today is, which is where because of sight line, it has to be across from this side.
Yes.
So a proposed driveway would have
Mm-hmm.
So 100 year, 30, driveway is down here.
Okay.
If that is in fact how they utilize the land, would allow fire apparatus directly through the property? My concern in asking for the continuance without prejudice is to be able to ensure that we are not approving something that would then not allow, you've got potentially now 24 tenants and 24 commercial tenants, not allow for that fire apparatus to move through there. And I don't feel comfortable making that motion without the road agent and the fire department weighing in, and I'm quite certain that you would want us to approach it that way with a continuance as well. I have a motion for continuance without prejudice. Certainly.
I think maybe the continuance that would meet what you're looking for would be for you to have a discussion with your town's attorney. Because if you grant the right to take access not from the frontage, it doesn't mean the planning board is forced to go to that location up there. The planning board still has the authority to say, we want this road to meet this safety thing. They're going to do a traffic count on what them buildings are. They'll make sure the road going through has it, and if it doesn't, they would have to go back to their front entrance to make that work. So I think your concern is you're going to handicap the planning board if you grant this variance? And I think maybe if you have a conversation with the town's attorney that if we grant this variance and they can't meet the site review regulations, that the planning board still has a right to enforce their regulations to wherever direction it takes them, which would include your fire safety, the number of, the width of the road, because technically that would be a road going across those two buildings and tying together. And I understand the concern is that between them buildings or in front of the building, wide enough to handle traffic along with the parking in them buildings, and the planning board would have to look at that as all part of their regulations. And I know, I think, I believe, I think you're worried that you're going to be putting the planning board in a bad situation, and I think if you talk to the town's attorney, the planning board doesn't have to, if it doesn't meet the regulations, they could deny it if they're not willing to bring it in there.
My motion for continuance is to be able to have a much better idea of what we'll be capable as far as fire apparatus being able to turn around within these spaces. And I hear what you're saying, but it would be a five-minute conversation for us to be better informed. So I have a motion for continuance without prejudice.
I just have a quick thing to add, just to let everybody know. It is right now being reviewed, and we will be able to have comments by the next ZBA meeting.
Okay.
Can I add? Can I speak?
Mm-hmm, certainly.
Just want to add a note to it, I know because we've already gone through the process once. The circulation pattern we made so a WP or 50 foot long tractor trailer can actually go around in totality each building, which is actually more than a fire truck. That was required in the first building's design with Rick. So we designed the driveways plus in width, so I don't believe that's an issue.
And you may be correct.
As far as circulation, but I understand.
I'd like to respect our fire chief and ask a question. So motion to continue without prejudice? Thank you. Roll call vote, please. Article five.
Yeah, you're asking him to continue to your next meeting? Yeah, so it wouldn't be continuing without prejudice, you would be asking him if he's willing to continue to the next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, because you're not making a decision, that's not the whole, that's the whole thing about it.
That is, I'm not making a decision at this time.
With the time and date.
Yeah, so you would ask him if he's willing to continue to the next meeting of the time and date?
I think it will, and it will likely speed the situation along for them if the answer is in fact positive. Entirely up to you, sir.
May I ask, because the client's going to ask me as soon as I explain to him? We are actually, we continued once for the planning board, because it was on a recommendation to come to you folks, which I thought was adequate. But we are already scheduled for the next planning board meeting. So if there's an answer that's derived, can we get that information so we can tell the planning board? Or I'd really hate to continue, because of the law line adjustment and site plan, that's two meetings, I'd have to continue again, which the client's not really going to be in favor of.
I, you can certainly, you can decline that request.
I don't think there's a reason for that. I would just ask if we could get the information when it becomes available as soon as possible, so we can just bring the planning board up to date.
Mm-hmm, okay.
What information would pull the trigger on? He'd have to come back for another, in front of us again, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if, maybe I could clarify a little bit, at least for the planning board side. I do a staff report because all the department has to review each application to review that it meets regulations, or if there's any issues that they foresee. And that includes the building department, road agent, fire assessing, police.
And we don't have that back on this.
And so the applicant will have that information for the planning board meetings. I typically send it out the Thursday before, like the same day that the board members pick up their packets. They'll be able to receive that information at that point. I don't have public comments back at this point. But then you would have that material for at the next meeting, the responses of their review, to get more information is what it sounds like to me that you're requesting.
Yes.
Just to get more information, so. I hope that answers.
You did, thank you.
So there was a vote and a motion, unless you object to that, and then we would move to an, okay. So we will see you, and we will have a response as quickly as possible to that, and then we can make an educated decision in reference to.
Just to address the applicant, it's up to the applicant if you want to continue at the planning board. The way the cases have been going, they typically don't want to see the application until they finish with a ZBA, but it is, once again, up to your
I'll have to ask that. I know the answer, but I'll ask the question anyway. I'm sorry, what was the date to be continued?
The third Wednesday in December is the 20th.
Good, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, case number 24932250133 NR-23, a special exception, applicant wildlife encounters.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, this is the simplest case of the night. But hey, we're staying consistent with the theme, thank you for having the turtle issue, by the way. It's a complete animal night. My name is Derek Small, representing DWS Times Two Holdings. The property in question is two parcels located at 270 Beauty Hill Road in Barrington. We commonly refer to as the old Swain Farm at the top of Beauty Hill. I've resided there for six years in 2019 with the intention of developing the property as an outdoor education ecology center to do onsite visitation. We applied for and were granted a conditional use permit to operate in that zone, neighborhood residential, as an educational institution. Then went to the planning board for, with a site plan, which was, initially, we were applying, and I'm just, I'm assuming that you already read the narrative and know a little bit about it and have looked at the sketch, but originally, we were looking at operating on the old farm property, which is 77 acres, as an ecology center and farm school. And we were thinking that under the state's agritourism guidelines would be the most appropriate way to move forward with the use of the property and the nature of the educational programs that we do. It was found as we were going through the process in 2019 that the, one of the guidelines that would not be consistent with our model is the fact that we are not looking to do commercial agricultural farming. And under agritourism, the majority of the revenue from an operation has to come from agricultural products, not the ancillary things such as educational experiences or whatever. And so we went through, got the conditional use permit as an educational institution, and our site plan was approved at the first planning board meeting at the start of the COVID pandemic. It was missed until now, basically, that this consists of basically residential, living in the farmhouse, and commercial in a zone where that is prohibited without getting a special exception from this board. So that's the purpose for our appearance here tonight. I don't know how much you want me to expand on that.
You could read the five criteria?
Yes. I gave all of my copies to Barbara, so I will read this. I got it, I got it. So under special exception requirements, issue one, no detriment to property values in the vicinity of the proposed development will result on account of the location or scale of buildings, structures, parking areas, or other accessways, the emission of odors, smoke, dust, sorry, smoke, gas, dust, noise, glare, heat, vibration, or other pollutants, or unsightly outdoor storage of equipment, vehicles, or other materials. The nature of our business and the nature of the site plan that was already approved and some slight modifications that we are going to be proposing to the planning board in 2024 should not create issues that are inconsistent with a farm property in the neighborhood residential zone. We will have sound of farm animals, we already have a plan for waste management once development of phase two is complete. We already have parking provisions, lighting provisions, all of that has already been addressed. So I would say no detriment to property values of a butters. And in fact, if you look at the structures that are there on the old Swain Farm now, I would argue that replacing them with more modern and more efficient and better-looking buildings and structures and the overall nature of the business and what it will bring to the community will, if nothing else, enhance the general well-being of the neighborhood and probably enhance the attractiveness of local properties in the area. No hazard, issue two, no hazard will be caused to the public or adjacent property on account of potential fire, explosion, or release of toxic materials. I certainly, as an ecology center and nature education center, hope that is not the case. We don't plan on having any of those. We did talk to the fire chief about making the pond that is near the front of the yard a fire pond. Still the plan to do that, so if we do have a structure fire, we'll have a local access to water, and if any of our local butters happen to have a fire, we will have a source of water that the fire department could use for that purposes, those purposes. Number three, no creation of a traffic safety hazard or substantial traffic congestion will result in the vicinity of the proposed development. Again, this is a relatively modest development that we're looking at without large numbers of attendance. It might be, you know, a school bus for a field trip. It might be a few cars for a lecture or a Barrington Chamber Business After Hours event. I think that the parking lot that we already approved was limited to 30 spaces. And again, it's 1.2 miles up from 125 on Beauty Hill with multiple ways left and right to avoid that horrendous northbound turn from, on 125 from Beauty Hill. No excess demand on municipal services or facilities, including but not limited to waste disposal, police, fire protection, and schools. We are certainly not increasing the burden on the schools. In fact, we'll be an asset to the schools, an asset to fire protection, and waste disposal will be minimal. The proposed use will not result in the degradation of existing surface and groundwater quality standards, nor will it have adverse effects on the natural function of the wetlands in the site that would result in the loss of significant habitat or flood control protection. Again, we are, our already approved site plan had provisions for storm water management and so on. We're looking at going to the planning board to revise to actually reduce significantly the impact on the environment.
Excuse me, one second, is there an active approval, or has it expired?
No, it's already approved.
So
It's already approved, phase one is complete, invested.
The applicant has come in, has discussed that he wanted to come in to redo his site plan. He does have an approved site plan, it was phased out, he's completed phase one. But this, the new application that he is going to present to the planning board would make that application no longer valid?
But the one he's got now currently is valid. Tested, he did phase one.
That allows him to operate a business in a residential area?
Well, so the educational institution, the CUP for that runs with the land. That will continue to run with the land.
Okay.
Now, as far as the planning board plans, once he submits a new plan and that gets signed off by the planning board chair, the quote-unquote current plan would no longer be active, I guess, in the best of circumstances.
If I could explain, what was missed on the original application was the residential house still being left there. First use in main man is ours. Presidential dwellings, but presidential camp because palm thing, those things weren't considered mixed uses. But through the, but through the process of the negotiations with the planning board, the planning board didn't feel that it was that agricultural thing, so they approved it as an educational facility and not as agritourism, as a palm thing.
Can I stop you right there? So how did they go from residential zone to commercial at the planning board?
Commercial's allowed with a conditional use permit, which you got. The mixed use is not allowed. So but when it first got started, the residential portion was part of his agricultural stuff, which is allowed. So, but when it first got started, the residential portion was part of his agricultural stuff, which is allowed. So when it went to the commercial thing, the idea that the residence was there got missed because the application was for that agritourism, which was a farm thing where the residential buildings can be there. And they said that we don't believe it's a farm thing, but we believe it's more of an educational thing. Never got picked up on that. Their residence wasn't, and their approval included both. So it's been way past the 30 days for the appeal. So that approval still stands because it's like three years old.
So the commercial use because it's called agritourism?
No, the commercial use is allowed. The mixed use is not. He's here because of the mixed use, not a commercial use.
You were not going to live on the property before this? Now you're going to live on the property?
Oh, it was always the intention to live on the property and operate on the property.
Residence was shown on the plan. It was a mistake that was made six years ago. And his approval is basically a mixed use approval because of what it was. But it was missed during the hearing process because the application changed. That's where the issue is. If he continues with what he's got approved for, he's allowed to continue because the appeal process, like I said, is way gone. So it's a legally vested educational facility with a residence on it.
So the question before us is.
He would like to make it a mixed use so that it's clean, that it's the educational with the residence on it as part of a mixed use.
Trying to right a wrong.
In a backdoor way.
Okay.
Because with the new application to meet the regulations, even though his current one, I don't know if it would be vested because if you submit a new application, that application is no longer valid. So for him to be in compliance, it should be a mix, should have had the mixed use to begin with. And since it evolved during the planning board process, that was never, even though it says it like in meeting minutes and that sort of thing, it was never, like, it should have become before this at one point as it evolved.
That's, thank you.
So right in the wrong.
Yeah. So the residential was mixed, was missed six years ago. Now the new plan is in front of the planning board.
It will be, yeah, yeah.
When he came in to talk to us, we caught it when he came in to talk to us before he goes to the planning board.
All right, so. There's nothing to do with farm animals. There's nothing to do with.
I've already been doing it. I taught a homeschool class the other day on the property and we lived there. I mean.
So again, would.
It's been all of COVID.
Something that was missed.
You could all, it almost could have come in, it almost could have come in under your equitable waiver. If you read the section on equitable waiver in the RSA about illegally, something that never should have got permitted that happened to run for, I think it was over a year, you guys can approve it as equitable waiver. So it could have been applied under either one. I don't know if you guys have your RSA book with you to read what the equitable waiver is.
I don't have it with me. That may have been, that may have been simpler to understand, but I get it now. I understand. We're just, we're just going backwards in time to, to allow the resident, mixed use application on the property instead of just the commercial use, which was there. Because that house has been there how long back there?
There's no record. It's, it's been, it's been the Swain residence and a commercial farm for 300 years.
Okay.
Are you changing the business model at all from what you were originally approved for?
Well, yes, that's her doing.
Okay, so, so back up, so.
That's a different issue.
Okay, no, it's, it is and it isn't. So you, you plan on changing the use other than what we currently see before us?
What you see before you is what he's planning to do.
That's, that's a, that is a work in progress sketch that reflects a greatly environmentally reduced impact for the development. The original approved plan was a long driveway that put the parking lot way down near the woods. I was instructed not to complicate things by bringing the prior approved plan. So I don't have something here. But I was encouraged to have some sort of a schematic so that you guys could, could see at least the very front part of the 77 acres. And those colored buildings are theoretical proposed education buildings that are, again, subject to change. But that's something that we're working on for the planning board.
Okay. I'm going to open to, do you have anything else you wanted to present?
No, I guess just to reiterate, we're just, again, here to, the special exception for the use. Yeah. Correct.
The locations are changing and have already.
To reduce environmental impact.
That's a, it's a completely new site plan. So what he's been approved for before, once he submits the new site plan.
But he's.
I think the question is, is the use going to change?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
And just the nature of the business, I mean, we do have 10, nine farm animals on the property now. It will always involve animals to some degree. And I don't think that it would be safe or responsible to expect an ecology center and an education building that features live animals, not to have, even for just safety and security, somebody resident on the property.
So on your drawing, there's buses parked on the property. Do you intend to use this as, like, schools will be bringing busloads of kids?
Barrington's second grade tried to come already last month. And I said, we don't have the parking spot ready for the bus, so we can't, but yes. That's a part of the, the services we intend to provide is small school field trips, yes.
What will be your hours of operation?
That was already approved with the planning board. I don't remember the exact details of it. But I mean, for the purposes of field trips, you know, you've got the school day. I think, do you guys remember, like, nothing after, like, I think it was nine or 9:30? You know, we had lighting issues with the parking lot, making sure that it wasn't intrusive to, you know, butters after dark at certain seasons and so on. You know, no, you know, loud 11 o'clock birthday parties or, you know, scout sleepovers in the woods with kids running around or anything crazy like that. So yes, but the planning board did define hours.
Okay.
In the prior approval.
I'm going to open this up to public comment at this time. If there's anyone online who'd like to speak, I just saw a hand flash up.
I see a Chris Blake.
Okay, go ahead and proceed, Mr. Blake.
Hi, good evening. Thank you.
Your name and address, please, for the public.
Right, my, my name is Chris Blake. I live in 77 GG Lane, Evergreen, Colorado. I'm a Connecticut licensed attorney. I represent Mr. Harvey Hubble, who is a butter to the, to the applicant. Mr. Hubble, in addition to owning roughly 40 acres, abutting, abutting the applicant, has a farm in Connecticut on which he does farm education programs. And on his behalf, I'm here to support this application for a special exception from the town of Barrington's zoning, planning and zoning regulations. And also in support of that, our farm manager, Mr. Stephen Casal, he manages the farm and the educational aspects on Mr. Hubble's property in Connecticut. He's somewhat of an expert in these areas and he's here to speak in support of this as well. And that's all I have to say. Unless there's any questions for me, I would defer to Mr. Casal.
So the only thing I'd ask is, do you, have you submitted a letter to be able to speak on behalf of the butter?
I have not.
No, I haven't. No, I haven't. Just discovered this on Monday. I can do that if you'd like. I can send you a letter.
In order to enter the comments, I'd appreciate it if you would. Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
And just to note, Mr. Blake, if you need to get in contact with the land use department, we have a form. Or you can just email it to us if you already have an authorization form.
I probably have one, but I don't know if, I do have one, but I don't know if it's applicable to the state of New Hampshire or the city or the town of Barrington. So I would be grateful to use your form.
Yes, I will put my contact info, or my email and contact information in the chat. And if you wouldn't mind just emailing me and then I can send that over to you.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any other mixed use properties in this area of Beauty Hill?
That's agriculture.
Is the trailer location a mixed use?
No, that is a home business.
Home business, okay. There's nothing else mixed use in this area? And if this is granted, it follows the property forever?
Yes.
Does anyone else feel like we need legal on this?
Didn't we, I'm sorry, Vanessa, didn't we discuss my concerns about that? I thought, I apologize, I've been in your office way too many times. I thought that a variance stayed with the property forever, but a special exception was contingent on the educational use permit. And that if the company ceased to operate, then the special use permit ceased to exist and thus the commercial aspect of the mixed use ceased to exist. That was my understanding. Maybe I misunderstood. And there was also some discussion that, you know, this, this board could impose a limitation. Like it's conditional to this business and if this business stops, then the mixed use authorization also expires. I believe you looked up some recent revisions to the code within the, like, the last three to five years that empowered this board to do that.
Yes.
You're 100% right.
Okay.
So.
Does not have to stay with the property forever.
I apologize, yeah. I was thinking the educational.
Correct.
And I thought I was clear on this, and now I'm not again.
So I, I, in order for me to develop a level of comfortability with making a motion in reference to supporting your special exception, I'm going to ask, I'd like to make a motion to continue. Go ahead. I thought I did. I'm closing public comment. So in reference. Yeah, no, I understand. We're moving backwards instead of forward on this and I want to be 100% correct as we're making a motion that it's going to stick for you and not be something that can be contested in any way. So what I would like to do is continue the case until December and consult legal on it. Is anyone else comfortable seconding that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask your permission to do that after I get a roll call vote, beginning with Alex, please.
Samaco, aye. Flanagan, aye.
Tippodoe, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. The reason that I want legal to weigh in on this is because we're doing something backwards and I need to be sure that what we're doing is appropriate and that it's not going to then put you in a situation where someone's going to contest it and come back and request something else of ZBA. So I'd like your permission to.
Small, aye.
Okay, well, I'd like your permission to see you again on December 20th.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Next up will be the approval of the meeting minutes from the prior meeting. I will ask that zoning board member, Flanagan not vote on this since she was not present for the meeting. They were, yeah, well, we had, we had, yeah, it was short, it was shortened to the point. We requested a site visit and we walked out the door. So motion to approve the minutes made by Hardikoff.
Seconded by Tippodoe.
And roll call, please.
Samaco, aye.
Stating, and Hardikoff, aye, motion carries. Thank you so much. And I would ask, is there any new information that we may need from our town planner?
Just some quick updates for those that may or may not know. The planning board is working on proposed zoning amendments. We had our meeting last night and some proposed zoning amendments. And then Monday, November 13th, was the first day to accept petition zoning amendments. At this time, we haven't received any. And then it closes on Wednesday, December 13th, which is the last day to accept petition zoning amendments. I think we may get a few, a couple, but I haven't seen, we haven't seen anything, like I said. And the planning board will hold public hearings beginning in January, January 9th. And I know it's under other business, but also we have the zoning board meeting dates for you in your packet if you have any other, so those are all like the third Wednesdays if there's any conflicts that you may foresee or if you feel like you need to change them.
December 13th, we just told him December 20th. The 13th cannot be the third Wednesday. We don't have a meeting on the 13th, right?
No.
Oh, okay. I'm reading this. I thought you just said the dates of our next meeting were up here.
Oh, no, so Wednesday, December 13th is the last day to accept petition zoning amendments. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I thought you were stating those were our meetings. I'm like, that's not what we just said, but thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will I be able to participate?
Remotes.
If I'm abstaining on the next meeting?
You're always welcome to participate, to have a quorum. We need to have a quorum in person. But then you will also count, I mean, you can vote and everything like that online, as long as we have a quorum in person.
Okay, okay.
So at least three members in person.
Okay.
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 I hope I'm not. I have a question, Vanessa.
Yes.
What they reviewed at the planning board meeting last night to put in front of the, as articles for the town vote, where are those that we could review? We could see those without watching the whole meeting online?
If you want, I can send them out. So after last night's meeting, they took some things out and everything like that. If you want, I can send you that draft.
Yeah, awesome, yeah.
Or if you want to wait until the draft that I sent to Laura, which I should have done tomorrow because it's deleting two things for her to send to do the warrant, drafting the warrant or close to our public hearing.
We have not closed out the video of this.
I don't think you guys have adjourned yet.
Oh, motion to adjourn. Anyone like to make that motion? Okay. Could have a roll call vote beginning with.
Samaco, aye.
Samaco.
Flanagan, aye.
Tippodoe, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you.